So could we please have a roll call? Oh, no, I do enter, we do that first.
In invocation?
We'll do the invocation, sorry. Mayor Mangarelli is not here. No.
And you're new.
Thank you.
We'll do the invocation and then Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Good.
Let's pray. Thank you, oh God, for the abundance of rain and snow we've had and the filling of our lakes and the filling of our water needs. We give you thanks for that today. We also give you thanks for these who have given up their time to serve our city and so we pray that you would give your wisdom to them in their deliberations and decision-making and be present with us today, we ask, through your power. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in pledging allegiance to the greatest nation on earth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take pass J.
So now we'll have roll call. Thank you, Maureen.
Mayor Mangarelli is excused. Mayor Protam Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes, when the lights are on.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
We do have a quorum today.
Very good, thank you, and we have a presentation.
The presentation is for Prescott Job Fair, Yavapai College, March 27, 2019.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor Protam, City Council. For those of you who don't know me, and for the record, my name is Richard Hernandez and I'm the Director for the Regional Economic Development Center at Yavapai College. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our job fair coming up on the 27th. You probably, I'm hoping, have a flyer in front of you that we handed out. This year's Job Fair and, Job and Career Fair, excuse me, will be held March 27 between 3:30 and 6:00 p.m. in our gymnasium at Yavapai College. There'll be early admission at 3:00 p.m. for veterans, those of us who are over 55, a little older, and job seekers with disabilities. They'll have an advanced entry to the job fair. The job fair is coordinated by Yavapai College Regional Economic Development Center and the Prescott Chamber and Arizona At Work and NACOG, Goodwill, Goodwill of Central and Northern Arizona and the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. And I'm sure I probably left somebody off, and if I did, I apologize, but we have some support from those entities here today also. We also have many more sponsors. If you look at the bottom of your flyer, their logos appear there, too many to take up your time, but you can see them referenced at the bottom of the flyer. Also on the flyer are links for job seekers to get help in building their resumes and getting interview tips so they can prepare for the event. Our goal is to invest in the local community by helping our local workforce find employment and while also helping our employers find job seekers. Last year, we had 80 businesses attend. By the way, 80 is the ceiling, that's a sellout for us. 80 businesses attend and set up booths, and we had over 300 job seekers show up at the event. As of last week, and I was just informed that we've added five more to it, so as of last week, we had 60, so I'm 65 now, and the registration deadline is this week, so in your day-to-day activities, if you can help us, that would be awesome. We know of 11 individuals that walked away with employment last year. In reality, though, there were several more because of the way we capture that data is for the employers to report back to us, and some of them have to go through a process and don't get back to us in a timely fashion or don't get back to us at all, but there were countless individuals that got assistance with their resumes and interview skills, how to dress, how to prepare, how to speak, from Arizona At Work, Goodwill, and NACOG. Veterans attending were able to stop by Veterans Row, which is a special row for veterans activities at the job fair, and gather resources to assist them with their employment needs. High school students were able to stop by Yavapai College's C-Tech table and learn about intern opportunities. The job fair is truly an investment in our local community. Like I mentioned, there's still time for businesses to register. If you need more information, of course, you can reach out to me or the Chamber, and Laura, sitting behind me here, and Catherine, who is not present, are published on the flyer with phone numbers and email addresses, and you can contact them directly. Once again, thank you for allowing me to share with you, and I can answer any questions or the folks here supporting me can also chime in.
Any questions from council? Richard, thank you for this. I think we can help by getting this on our website, and certainly some of us have a couple of radio things that we can make these announcements for you, and thank you for doing a special reach out to veterans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard.
So, Maureen, now we will have the consent agenda.
Correct.
Go ahead.
Would anybody like to pull, oh, are you putting that up for us, Mr. Woodville?
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Can you turn the lights on so I don't fall asleep?
If I can figure out which switch it is. Maybe this one? There we go.
I just want everybody to see how good you look.
Actually, it was kind of relaxing, but, yeah.
Alrighty, so can anyone?
Yes, anybody from the council would like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Can I have a motion for the consent items?
Mayor Protam, I move to approve Consent Items 7A through 7E.
Second.
All in favor, please make it be known.
Councilman Blair?
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. So now we are with consent ordinances?
Correct. Sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. Item A, Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1654, approving a land lease agreement with Verizon Wireless LLC for a wireless communications facility located on city-owned right-of-way adjacent to that property located at 550 South Montezuma Street, Prescott, Arizona, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance. Item B is Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1669, declaring the small cell facilities document a public record and adoption of ordinance number 2019-1646 pertaining to the use of right-of-way for small cell wireless facilities, monopoles, and utility poles for co-location, and Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1646, amending Title 8, Chapter 8-2, City Right-of-Way, Sections 8-2-1, 8-2-2, and 8-2-3, and adding a new section, 8-2-18, use of right-of-way for small cell wireless facilities, monopoles, and utility poles for co-location, adding a severance clause and providing for penalties.
Any comments from council? Can I have a motion?
Mayor Protam, I move to approve Items 8A and 8B.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Very good, now we'll move on to our regular agenda, and I think we have a real treat right now. Go ahead, Maureen.
Appointment of Paul Napper to the Youth Advisory Board.
So some of you may be aware, the mayor started about a year ago now, thinking about doing a youth advisory board. We have seven students that serve on this board, and we had a vacancy, and Paul Napper applied and was accepted, and Councilwoman Scholl, you are the liaison to the board. Anything you'd like to add?
No, we've been making great progress in introducing the students each meeting to a different department. We have department heads come in and kind of give them an overview of what they do, and so it's a really great opportunity for them to learn about the city government and then also to provide ideas and feedback that I can relay to council, and so we're excited to have you.
I'm excited to be here.
So Paul, would you like to tell us a few things about yourself and why you decided to apply to be on the Youth Advisory Board?
I'm a sophomore at Prescott High School. I'm 16 years old, and later in my life, I would like to do something involving the government, and I felt like this would be a good first step.
Very good, I was impressed with your application. Boy Scouts, band, you're just very involved in a lot of things. We are really excited to have you. So we need to vote on this, don't we? Can I have a motion?
Mayor Protam, I move to appoint Paul Napper to the Youth Advisory Board to fulfill a vacancy until June 30, 2020.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Congratulations, Paul. Now we'd like to do your oath of office.
Paul, you want to?
He looks too good. He's out there, I didn't see him.
I state your name. Paul Napper. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution. The Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. And laws. And laws. Of the State of Arizona. Of the State of Arizona. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And defend them. And defend them. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Born in domestic. Born in domestic. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. And impartially. And impartially. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of Youth Advisory Board members. Of Youth Advisory Board members. According to the best of my abilities. According to the best of my abilities. So I do a firm. So I do a firm.
Very nice. I think that's the first of many oaths that Mr. Napper will be taking. Alright, here we go, on to item B.
Award of Contract to Kelly Wise Engineering Incorporated for Design Services of the Lower Goldwater Improvement Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, Council, Joe Baines, Recreation Services Director. I want to present to you today Lower Goldwater Lake Improvements, looking for a design contract, and it involves quality life and also economic development through the visitation that it will create or could create. Here's a look at the property, kind of from 3,000 feet, if you will, 160 acres. It has an upper reservoir and a lower reservoir. I'll get into a little closer detail as we go through, but that's the property in its extent, 160 acres. Couple pictures, this one's taken from the Ranch Trail, Trail Number 62, that's up above the lake quite a bit. It's not very many places that you can see both lakes from, but that is one. That's one more at street level, another one taken from closer to the caretaker's house. Little bit of history, this property was purchased between 1913 and 1915. Actually, it was an agreement with the people who owned it where the city would buy water from them up to a point, and then that money would go towards the purchase, so that's why the two-year period for the purchase of it. On August 8, in 1923, Mayor Morris Goldwater and council inspected the dam and accepted it. I guess they had a little more responsibility back then. And then on December 29, 1923, City Council passed Resolution Number 76, naming the reservoir at Lake Goldwater, not Goldwater Lake, it was Lake Goldwater, in honor of Morris Goldwater's contribution. Morris Goldwater, I can't remember how many years, but it was well over 10 that he was the mayor of Prescott and served on council, was in the state senate, did a lot of stuff for a lot of years, died in 1939 in Prescott at age 87. And then in 1932, the upper dam was completed. So in order to open up this lower lake, which hadn't been opened up to the public for a number of reasons, primarily because there was a water treatment facility at the bottom of the lake that was a kind of an attractive nuisance that would have caused a liability potentially for the city of Prescott, that was mitigated here a couple of years ago, so that's allowed us to kind of open the door and look at doing this. So on December 10 of 2018, we put out a request for qualifications for design services, received three proposals, and evaluated by a city review committee. We had people from Public Works on that committee, we had a couple people from our Parks and Rec Advisory Board on that committee, as well as myself, to evaluate those proposals. Top two firms were identified, that was Kelly Wise Engineering of Prescott, Arizona, and Kim Lee Horn, also of Prescott, Arizona. We invited them for interviews and presentations, and then the selection committee determined that Kelly Wise Engineering was the top candidate, and they provided a fee proposal in the amount of $69,987.50. Kelly Wise, just for council's benefit, did do the design when we did the improvements in 2013, and did a real good job. This was kind of the conceptual plan that we provided for them to propose on. Now they'll take this, provided council approves it, and dial that into a set of construction drawings that can be bid, but I'll get, in the next slide, I'll go into a little bit more detail, but I wanted to point out the phase line there. There's further opportunity at Lower Lake to do some other things. One of the things that is real important, I think, to this property is to have a light hand on the land. It's about a 10-acre lake, we don't want to just shove a bunch of people in there and have negative impacts from that, so we really want to ease our way into this, and I think you'll see with where we're headed here, it's going to be a pretty good use of the property. The public owns it, they need the opportunity to be able to utilize it, but by the same token, we as stewards of the land want to be careful about how we move forward with that. So I guess while we're on this slide, I'll point out a couple things. The yellow that you see there would be proposed trails. We do a fishing trail at all of our lakes, which is a trail that's closer to the shoreline. We get it just above the height of the dam so that it stays out in high-water events, but it also then allows the fishermen to get a lot closer to fish from the shore, so we do that on all the lakes. It'll also provide connectivity for those trails to go around both of the lakes, which we don't currently have right now for a number of reasons. We want to provide more parking spots. If you look up in the upper right-hand corner, you can see we've got some here, which those parking spots will serve the upper lake as well as the lower lake. One of the things that we've noticed is, while we did the improvements in 2013 and added 104 parking spots, we quickly found out that, you know, pretty much every weekend from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we'll park all the way out to Senator Highway. It's just that popular. You know, at 6,000 feet in the Ponderosa Pines, it's a great escape for people from the valley as well as our local citizens. Down a little bit further, we will access from the Upper Park, the existing park through the kiosk, we'll build a road across here that'll connect to Forest Service Road that's on city property that's already existing. We won't really have to do too much with that, and then get down to an area here where we'll have restrooms, day-use remada, which are very popular for weddings and company picnics, you name it, and then some day-use areas and some more parking down by the lake.
Duck blinds?
No duck blinds at this point. Again, the amenities of one day-use remada, restrooms, day-use sites, a ceremony pad, which has been really popular, that's a pad usually in one of the more photographic areas of each lake. We have one at Watson, we have one at Upper, Goldwater will have one here, and it's an area that's used a lot of times for weddings, renewing vows, things like that. They get utilized quite a bit. We'd like to accomplish through this design about 125 to 150 paved parking spots. Mentioned the fishing trail, I mentioned being the light hand on the land, also mentioned the future phase. I wanted to point out here, too, that, you know, Goldwater Lake, Upper Goldwater Lake has two great, two state-record fish that have been caught out of that lake. Gamet Fish manages those fisheries for us. We met with them here a couple weeks ago, and, you know, they mentioned that Goldwater Lake is one of the best cold-water lakes in the state of Arizona for especially trout. Last year was a state-record gila trout was caught out of there. We feel like there's probably another state record in there that just hasn't been caught yet. It also has the state-record red-eared sunfish that was caught in the early 90s, I believe it was, so really good fishing lakes. The Gamet Fish is looking very favorably at an opportunity to really help us with stocking that lake and making it a really, a good trophy lake. The timeline, if council decides we want to move forward with this, would be a notice to proceed for the design contract in April, advertised for construction bids in August of 2019, City Council approval of that construction contract in September of 2019, followed by a notice to proceed for construction in November, and completion in February of 2020 prior to our spring kickoff, our spring season. So the timing for that works off pretty well. It does set up well for a winter buildup there. You know, obviously, we do have weather from time to time, we've noticed that recently, but all in all, it's going to be a lot better for the park users if we're able to do the construction over the fall and winter, so that's kind of the timeline that we're headed for. I wanted to point out that the funding for this is available in the fiscal budget out of transient occupancy tax or the bed tax. So with that, if you have any questions, I also have, Kelly Wise Engineering has a representative here, Gary Kelly, too, if you have any questions for him.
Great, thank you, Joe. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
Councilman Blair?
Thank you, Joe. It's a long time coming that that lower lake gets open, you know, since we don't use it for our water supply any longer, and I spent many of my 13, 14-year-old days hiding from the caretaker while I was hunting ducks off that lower lake, so I'm glad I'm going to be down there legal from here on out, so I appreciate it. It is a great bass lake, a lot of opportunities, I'm sure that the hiking opportunities on down the backside of that watershed will be expanded even further, so thank you for what you do, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess Council Lamerson.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Joe, is that property in the city?
The property is in the county. It's city property that's in the county.
It's in the county.
Correct.
So my only point in bringing that out is, you know, we hear so much rhetoric out there from time to time about regional cooperation, blah, 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 and of course, that begs the backup question, only city residents use it since we're the owners, and the answer's no, but we've put in collaboration with the state and Fishing Game, and thanks, by the way, to Fishing Game for being willing to help us manage the lake. I mean, that's our tax dollars, too, especially the people that buy fishing licenses and hunting licenses and such coming back, but I think it's a great thing to do. I just wanted an opportunity to share publicly that here's another amenity that the citizens of Prescott use their tax dollars in collaboration with federal and state agencies to help make sure that there's nice amenities here that everybody in the area and from outside of the area come here and enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Good.
Yeah, I think this is going to be a very great project and a real additional amenity for not only our residents but visitors and tourists alike, and they'll be refilling our bed tax fund. Is this $70,000 coming from current fiscal year bed tax? And that's a pretty significant amount. Do we still have a significant amount left in the fund?
Yes, Councilman, this was budgeted and discussed during the budget process. It was budgeted at $70,000 exactly, so it came in right under budget.
And we're pretty close to what that whole fund is projected to be used for, for the rest of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Before we go to public comment?
Just have one more little comment. I know exactly what happened in this deal, I've been here a long time. They kept that closed so that the city staff could go down there and catch all the big fish. That's what happened, and once they caught that real big one that we all knew was down there, then all of a sudden, they opened that up.
I have to admit, I did catch a five-pound bass down there.
You think you got my point?
I remember, as we were down there, Cindy, we were there, remember you took some pictures? It's absolutely beautiful. It's a gorgeous lake, so excited about this. I'd like to just recognize Kelly Wise Engineering because they also did our pickleball courts for a song and a dance, and we really appreciate what they do for the city, so. Alright, any public comments?
No, Mayor Protam.
Okay, very good. Then can I have a motion, please?
Mayor Protam, I move to approve City Contract Number 2019-145 to Kelly Wise.
Second.
Engineering.
Okay, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Very good. Congratulations to everyone, great work. So now we will go on to item number C.
Award of City Contract to Danson Construction LLC for Construction Services to Expand the Wastewater Collection Building.
Hello, Eric.
Hello.
It's good to see you.
Good seeing everybody here today. Eric Bay with Public Works. This next item will be short and sweet, it's for the construction phase of the wastewater collection building expansion. The existing collection building was constructed in about 2005, so it's about 14 years old now, and it has served wastewater collections very well over the years, although over the years, the building has continually felt smaller and smaller as collections, staff, and equipment continue to grow. This project will help with that. It will provide an additional equipment bay that we can use for storing equipment, it will provide an additional office space for us. The design contemplates a skater room where we can store Skater Central. As you guys know, we're currently progressing with our Skater integration project. It will enlarge the locker room, give us a little bit more elbow room in there, and it will create some usable conference room space upstairs, which currently has some OSHA restrictions to us using it fully. So all in all, this is a great little project for, excuse me, for the wastewater collections division. City staff has publicly bid out this project, we received three responsive bids. The lowest, the apparent low, being Danson Construction. We contacted the contractor and we did a little background research on their quality and past performance, and we're ready to get them on board. Talking to the contractor, they're ready to get started with this project as well. Funding is available in the wastewater fund, and we are recommending award at this time. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions, comments from council? Hearing none, we will, any from the public?
No, Mayor Protam.
Thank you.
It's a bigger place to have a barbecue.
Sounds good, Steve. Alright, can I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move to award City Contract Number 2019-197 to Danson Construction LLC for Construction Services to Expand the Wastewater Collection Building.
Second.
Thank you, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Very good, we'll move on to item D.
Award of City Contract to Wilmington Fan, a joint venture for construction manager at risk, pre-construction services for the new airport passenger terminal, and to approve Amendment Number 1, which includes required federal contract provisions for obligated sponsors.
Good afternoon, Dr. Sabata.
Good afternoon.
A big day for you.
Yes.
Get this moving.
Yes, absolutely, and good afternoon, members of council and Protam mayor. Well, as you know, we've, we're still really busy. Just so you know, the last five days, consecutive days, our load factors have exceeded 90%.
My goodness.
The spring break rush is on, and it's nice to have all the flights going out full, and we're supposed to have snow tonight, but knock on wood, no more than an inch, right? So we're moving forward, and as part of this, I'm in front of you today to talk about the construction manager at risk method and the fact that we're moving on toward building that terminal building. We're currently in the design period, we're at 60% design, and now we're moving to bring in the construction manager at risk into the project to team together with the design team. And this was actually approved by the FAA earlier this year, and the purpose of this is to enhance efficiencies within the design by having the construction manager join together with the architect to make sure that we can eliminate things that maybe would be higher cost in the project. So in the long run, this reduces disputes, this increases efficiency, and we look at fewer change orders. So right now, we're looking at pre-construction services in the amount of $140,936. This is comprised of $110,936 in pre-construction services, $20,000 in utility locations, which is typically what you do a little bit later, but we find out problems now rather than later, and then a $10,000 contingency for unforeseen circumstances. The other thing that I'm proposing today is per FAA guidelines, we do have to add in contract provisions for obligated sponsor and airport improvement program projects. This is being added as an amendment number one, and it has those required federal provisions that, for obligated airport sponsors, that must be included, so we have that as an additional amendment. Right now, just so you know what's going on, we do have an expectation that we're going to get a guaranteed maximum price on the terminal building by May. We'll go into negotiations through June, and we expect us to break ground in September, so things are going well.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah.
Comments or questions from council? Excellent, very good job.
Great.
Alright, any comments from the public?
No, Mayor Protam.
Right, can please have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award City Contract Number 2019-172 to Wilmington Fan and to approve Amendment Number 1, 2019-172A1, which includes required federal contract provisions for obligated sponsors.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Very good, congratulations, Dr. Sabata.
Thank you.
Item E, please.
Award of Contract to Eagle Management and Events LLC for Planning and Implementation of the 2019 Fourth of July Special Event.
Back so soon, feels like I was just here. In November of 2015, with increasing pressure on the general fund, council at that time had recommended that we move away from city funding of the Fourth of July event and move more towards a public-private partnership. So we went out and created an RFP, and in the years 2016, 17, and 18, we were able to put on the Fourth of July event with a third-party promoter downtown. to put on the Fourth of July event with a third-party promoter downtown on, at Mile High Middle School. Well, that benefited the local businesses pretty well, putting feet on the street. There was some, you know, backlash, or not backlash, but some downfalls to the property, one being that the fallout zone was really small, so we had small canister-sized fireworks that we had to use. As well as when we're in any kind of a fire restriction, it was difficult to be able to pull off the Fourth of July fireworks. And so consequently, in 2017 and 18, the fireworks portion was canceled. So we put together a committee and wanted to look at how we were going to move forward with this event and see if we could find a way to find some assurance that we could put the event on, even in the event of fire restrictions. So we put together a committee with the city council representation, we had Chamber of Commerce, we had the Fire Marshal, who else did we have? Prescott Downtown Partnership, a couple people from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and really looked at, you know, what we could do. The consensus from the committee was to try to see if we could do something at Watson Lake, being as we have a little better level of assurance, being that we can shoot the fireworks over the water and control that fallout zone a lot better. Fire, obviously, was a big consideration there, and the Fire Marshal was very involved in that. So on December of 2018, we sent out an RFP to 21 event promoters throughout the state. On February 14th, we received one proposal back from Eagle Events and Management LLC. They're the ones that have done the previous Fourth of July events down at Mile High Middle School, so they do have a background in it. The proposal was reviewed and found to be in compliance with the requirements that were set out in the RFP. Eagle Events and Management does have a successful track record in hosting special events in the city of Prescott. Some details of the event through the proposal, it'll be held on Thursday, July 4th, from 12:00 noon until the conclusion of the fireworks around 10:00. It's going to be a family-friendly focus. We want it to be affordable. The price is $5 entry and $15 wristbands for unlimited rides for the whole day, so water slides and bounce houses and those types of things. So that's pretty affordable for the kids. Again, we really want to focus on a family-friendly event. There will also be live bands, a disc golf tournament, hydration station, food vendors, liquor sales. No outside coolers will be allowed, that'll help us control that. Fireworks show will start at 9:00 with the Hot Shots Prayer being read by Brendan McDonough, followed by the National Anthem, and then a 20-minute fireworks show with shell sizes ranging from eight-inch to three-inch. As an example, three-inch, I think, was about the maximum we could do downtown, so we'll be able to get back to more of the, what we were doing at Pioneer Park down there. The city will be responsible for the traffic control and supporting the marketing events. That is really the only city contribution to this. We're excited about, you know, the opportunity for Watson Lake. I think it'll be a beautiful venue for it. We also have a little trepidation in moving and doing a first-year event there, but I feel pretty strongly that we vetted this. We vetted it through a special event committee, we have vetted it through our Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and then, of course, the committee. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
That's where it started. Many years ago, it was at Watson Lake Park.
That's where we used to do the Bluegrass Festivals.
I can remember without a doubt that one of the shells went off and cut all of them on fire at once. So it was a five-minute show.
We'll try not to do that this year.
Councilman Shiski.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Joe, what about parking? Every time I've talked to somebody about this, they go, wow, awesome idea. Where are we going to park?
Well, we figured that we've got about enough parking on-site that could provide for about 8,000 people. The expectation, the event promoter figures about 3,000 people is what he's going to have. You know, it's really kind of a crapshoot to see what that is. We do have other options available to us, you know, one in that we do control the highway in front of the property right now, so you could do a number of things there if you needed to. We could shuttle. There's a lot of options to us. Again, we really, we really, we are going to be having a focus on this at every one of our special event committee meetings, especially with the traffic engineering folks and the fire folks and the police folks to really work through that. But we feel pretty strongly that we have enough parking on-site, but we also have options if we don't.
Okay, and where is that parking that you've got on-site, Joe?
As you pull into the park, on the right-hand side, that whole area, all the way down to the lower boat ramp is available. And then if you go to your left, we've also got a piece of property that runs back there that'll park quite a few cars. We also have some options available to us in the park that we wouldn't typically use for a special event in there, in that we could utilize the south boat ramp a little bit, too. Some stuff normally we would leave open for the public, because when we do special events there, we typically leave the lake open for public access, so we leave those spots unaccounted for, if you will.
So is the Ramada going to be rented?
The Ramada's going to be part of the show. That's going to be part of where they're going to be staged.
Okay. And it's going to be, it's, I understand it's going to be from a barge out in the lake?
We will do a barge if we need to, or it'll be up to the fire officials what we need to do. Prevailing winds are typically southwest. We also feel like we can shoot them off the shore. Probably, a lot of it depends upon lake levels and all that stuff, but we'll let the fire professionals weigh in on that. And I believe Fire Marshal Debbendorf is here, too, if any questions for him. Said he was going to be, anyway.
He's outside in the lounge chair.
(laughing) Any other questions or comments from council?
It'd be fun.
Anything from the public?
Nope.
Okay, very good. Very good. Joe, I think this would be a great idea. We'll give it a shot, and I think it'll be beautiful over the lake, so.
Thank you.
Excellent. So can I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move to award contract number 2019-187 to Eagle Management and Events LLC for the planning and implementation of the 2019 Fourth of July fireworks event at Watson Lake Park.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Very good, and our final item is Mr. Tyler. How are you, Tyler? Legislative report.
Very good, thank you.
How many days into the session now?
Oh, it's about 50, 54, 55, something like that.
Over halfway?
Yeah, we're over halfway.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah.
As you can see, I have the list in front of you. I won't go through every single one, but I'll jump through them, and if you have any questions, as always, please let me know. I do want to let you know, the first one on the list, the vacation rental regulation, which would help cities and towns overall with regulating those vacation rentals, it did pass through the House 41 to 19, so it's progressing, which is good news. The next one, the partisan offices, this would have made us put parties on the ballot starting in 2020. This looks like it's dead for the session, so that's also good news for us. Jumping down to preserve local funding, Senate Bill 1001, the highway safety fee repeal, it did pass the Senate, but it's been held in the House Committee that it's assigned to for two consecutive weeks. There's some talk that it's not going to move forward. The governor obviously doesn't support it, and they don't believe that there's enough votes counted to do a supermajority to overrule his veto. So it's probably dead, but we're going to keep an eye on it for the session. After that, House Bill 2702, this has to do with creating a nexus for the remote sellers, online sellers. This one seems to have stalled a little bit in the House Rules Committee. A lot of bills have in the House Rules right now. They have a few dozen that are stuck there for various reasons. This would help cities and towns overall, we'd be able to collect more TPT, and it would be a good thing overall. We're keeping an eye on it, but it might have some struggles. The sponsors, or those, the proponents, which the league has won, they might have to find creative ways to get it through if it can't pass the rules, so we'll keep an eye on that. Jumping down a few to Senate Bill 1460, digital goods. This will probably be considered on the floor this week or next week. There's some momentum to get that pushed through. This would hurt us quite a bit overall. The League of Cities and Towns created estimated numbers of the impacts. It was 60 million to the state, about 27 million to cities and towns, and I believe 7 million to Prop 301, which deals with education. So the overall ramifications would be very hurtful. It's kind of up in the air on how much support this would have if it got to a floor vote. So the league, this is probably their number-one priority right now in the session. They're on top of it, and we're keeping an eye on it, so I'll keep you posted.